So nine three one forty two, forty five twenty two. I feel like I know that. No, I've never had that number. Nope, we gotta back up. That damn spell checks.
Oh yeah, I believe it.
The next morning you check it again. And you can do that on your cell phone. I mean, it's easy. And then they're gonna, I'm gonna go down there with a compass and a tripod.
Oh yeah.
Put them to the bill. Have them run the closure on their work. We'll go out and check.
I'll be there. Forty five twenty two.
They're not allowed to use.
I feel like I know who.
They're not gonna, they're not gonna do that here in competition.
Yeah.
But they can check declaration.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah.
Make sure that they're good when they hit there.
Forty five eighty two, Maury Stone.
You could just put a search.
Can you?
Search nine three one forty five twenty two.
How do you do this?
Just type it right in there.
Nine three one forty five twenty two. He actually teaches, taught Delta Force.
Hit the cert, so hit the inner battery.
Yeah, well, we.
And astronomical observation.
It's not in your phone book.
I didn't know you could do that. I'm gonna test that.
It could have been. If he, if he was coming on the medical side, then we trained him.
I don't think.
But.
He's, he's actually licensed.
Well, it worked that way either. I just, I just, I just did my cousin's thing. Let me see if I got.
Now I got rid of it. It's not in my phone book anymore. I think I'm done with this.
Thank goodness you stopped aggravating my person.
Down on the ground, if it was an exercise.
She put my. I'm wrong.
Two when the ones hit wrong. We have one guy on the last.
Eight three zero.
He, he landed on.
Four five eight two is my cousin Maury.
And he got up and his.
It won't show him there on my, on my list either.
Well, they got him away from us.
So what's. I just caught a little bit of, what's that? What's that?
Was, was a size of watermelon. And we're like, well, guess what? You wouldn't only out for six months.
Why is that in his phone?
It takes two months now. No junk pay.
So David was, um, he got licensed after surveying. He was doing Dr.
Oh yeah.
Basically, we surveyed all of the army.
Okay, yep.
Astronomical observation. He's done an eight hour course for us.
Oh yeah. Yeah, that's what the military.
Dead reckoning in June. Check, how do you check?
Oh yeah. When I was at Navy ROTC, I had learned dead reckoning and all that. The Air Force for medics. We're giving coordinates.
No different on the airplane than this on the home.
Nope. The only thing is that you gotta get used to moving like this on the, on the ocean. Oh yeah, oh I know. You know that one. Some areas.
That's what I'm trying to, that's what I was gonna try to make. And how I found out.
Both officers and.
I was up at his, one of his Kansas house. And Ricky wrote in a conversation. He's like us. He's trying to understand why it's an issue now. When it's not even permanent. Hi Scott. Hello.
So this is David.
Then of course, we got to play Mad Bomber and everything. We should put it in here. Oh, we, we even tried the, the numbers. Well, yeah, stress, you know, we have to throw in that stress factor and everything. You gotta think on your shoulders. She's gone off.
How are you all doing?
Hi, how are you?
Good.
You know, work, work, work. And I told her I said, well, we got a bunch of talk, you know.
That was a new lady there the other day that was pretty cool. She must be fresh. I'll be kind of bad.
You can always talk. Oh, I, I, oh, I don't know. I, she, she only works Saturdays and Sundays.
Oh wow.
She's all my listen up. She said, oh, it's nobody. Yeah. Yeah.
Best you can get.
Yes, sir.
These are the kind of places I've been getting to go lately.
I was a bad person last time. She needs a bad person, a bad person this time. To contact Phil.
Phil's over here.
Texted I say, Phil, it's five o'clock.
I don't know. I couldn't understand what wrote that.
Oh no. Because during, during summer, when the berries are out.
Then bang.
Then during winter. You gotta wait for, for hypothermia and all that.
It didn't bother them. I don't want to have some dirt of box. Well, he ain't even making, he ain't making his friends.
When you're letting a body eat on the litter.
No.
I was over in the house. He planted a body a few years ago. They almost checked it. I wrote him a letter when he had that sign.
I knew about it first on Saturday morning because it happened.
The other side of the side.
Yeah, on that, on that water truck.
Yeah, the entrance of my neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, no, she, she kept me.
I talked about it. The leg up next to you.
Although as soon as Chief arrived, he was like.
Fact is, when the mayor gets.
Chicken chips.
I don't know how the mayor does this. She announces for Michael to come talk to him. Something in the back.
But he, he was able to get me.
Why is it not for that?
He said, I told him that.
It does, I think.
Your sanity seems pretty volatile.
Went over to him, blaming it on his son, it's true, David and. To him. Cause they're afraid they're gonna cut the.
Is he still over the bar?
Yeah, I told him when I got here, cause I had dropped off something at the Legion Hall. That Phil was still over the bar and his vehicle's all locked in.
He can run over. Jump across.
Cause I've got a seven o'clock American Legion meeting if we can start on time.
He's headed this way, alright.
Progress.
You got a seven o'clock tonight?
Yeah, they called us short notice, American Legion is having a meeting. So if we could progress, we'd be really appreciated.
An awful fancy watch there.
It's nice, right?
No? Yeah?
Looking at your.
It's nice. You wanna, you and I are probably one of the few that still wear a watch.
Yeah. I only wore it cause I like a significant amount of things.
Don't care if it runs or not.
Uh, is Phil on his way or?
That's why I'm walking you across, yes.
Alright, that's good. Should we go ahead and call the order?
I don't get picked for it. He says common passion for John, cause it's easier, cause his last name's hard.
I've never said your last name.
I never get picked.
John is really easy. Heck or we know it's. Heck or we know. It's not that hard. Alright.
There he is. Yeah, sheer heart, sheer heart. And I didn't even see any sunglasses while there some.
Is that, is that Italian?
Yes.
Oh, you need to speak Italian?
What?
Do you speak Italian?
All right, are you? I wasn't gonna yell at you when I was stopped in at the Legion Hall. The hits got it's mad fine. Oh, you guys waiting for me?
Yep, right over here. Not too long.
Manziamo. That's all you have, that's all you have to do. But see. I saw you pass.
Hey, you got a cell, you got a computer.
Are you ready for it, Deborah?
Look at you, only four minutes.
Alright, we're gonna call the meeting to order at five oh four. Uh, let's start with roll call.
Sheena Martinez, District One.
Paul Carey for District Two.
Philip King, District Three.
Todd Shearhardt, District Four.
Herb Dyer, District Five.
And Darren Trotter, Mayor. Alright, uh, please, uh, stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for, uh, the invocation afterward.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the text. One nation, under God, one and indivisible.
Uh, we have Pastor John here from Vista Church to, uh, provide the invocation.
Well, dear God, we thank you, Lord, for your goodness and your grace today. God, we thank you that we live in a nation, in a state, that we could come together freely and discuss things. God, I pray wisdom upon everything that is said and done today, this evening. God, that it would accomplish purposes for the good of the people of this great city, Lord. So we pray your blessing on everything that is done, on this council and every person that's here. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor John. Alright, uh, so next item. Carrie texted me, by the way. So the next item is citizens' comments. Uh, if you'd like to speak for citizens' comments, please, uh, stand up at the podium, uh, give us your name and your address. Uh, and please.
Hello, Marina Papoff, eleven ten Gentle Street. Was that it? Okay, good job. So, um, I want clarification. Um, I've been reading the ordinance, so today I, this weekend, there was, um, on social media, I guess there was some incidents on Gentle Street that some boys were, um, throwing rocks at my animals that are gated and at the Hancock's dogs down the street. And, um, so Blue came by today, um, because all the social media and these boys that were throwing rocks at our animals. But he informed me that, um, in the city of Castroville, that I cannot have pigs and, um, gave me thirty days to get rid of my pigs. Now, I've been through all the ordinance. Um, I asked him to check. He said he was gonna make sure that that's right. But, um, I definitely need clarification, cause I read all of, um, the animal codes. And the only thing that says specific is no miniature, uh, Vietnamese pot belly pigs, which I don't have. So, um, yeah, I was a little bit in shock because I bought four acres on the river, cause I'm an animal lover. And, uh, and I have animal, I bought a, it's a, the property has a barn on it and I have miniature donkeys. Um, so anyways, I just want clarification about can I have pigs or not? As far as I've read, I didn't see anything that says that I can't.
And unfortunately, we can't talk about anything that is not on the agenda, but please do follow up with that.
Okay.
I'll get back to you on that.
Okay. Can I get your name one more time? I'm sorry. It's, uh, Marina Papoff, eleven ten Gentle Street. Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks Marina.
Thank you.
Professionally known as the pig lady.
But not the Vietnamese pot lady.
Duly noted.
Alright, do we have anybody else that wants to speak for citizens' comments? Alright, uh, next item is our consent agenda. Uh, on this, we have minutes for January twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, regular called council meeting. And resolution adopting the investment policy. Uh, do I have a motion on that?
The move, we approve the minutes as read.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion? Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're gonna do a little bit of moving around, did, uh, is.
Can I, I'm, I'm just gonna speak to that last item, cause I know it's a little bit unusual. We had the fi, the financial policies in the consent.
Thank you.
Just so you know, we have an ongoing audit for the city. Every year we have this, it's about this time. The auditor brought our attention that it'd been a while since we brought those to the council for adoption. They're pretty boilerplate as far as what's required. We aren't doing a whole lot of sophisticated things with our financial investments, to be quite frank. The, the, uh, rates of return have been very, very low. But we are, that is something I've talked to, to our financial, uh, finance director Leroy about doing in the coming months, especially as we see inflation and things starting to go up and banks starting offering better rates and that kinda thing. All those are indicators that the city might be able to do a little bit more to, to earn money on its money according to this policy. But the policy, there's nothing new in it. It's all, all the existing policies. So just make sure you're aware of that. If you have any questions, you can email me and I'll be happy to address them later.
And, uh, as I understand, we're gonna be going through those during the budget workshops.
Yeah, so something you and I discussed was, uh, you know, since these need, really need to be adopted on an annual basis, uh, I think it'd be prudent to do it during the budget process. Go through our financial policies, go through our investment policy and anything else that is required for us to, to do on an annual basis. Let's do it as part of the budget cycle. It just seems like it makes sense to do that. So that's something that I think we may even do during the retreat, maybe on day one or day two of the retreat. We'll present those to you all and have discussion about them.
Great. Alright, um, so the next item, uh, we are gonna do a little bit of moving around here. Um, do we have our engineer that's going to be here?
So I, I apologize, cause I, I didn't know whether or not he's gonna be able to be here. He is not. He's actually at a conference or a meeting in San Antonio, so he's not able to attend. Um, so it's not, we don't have to do that one right away, but certainly we can follow the order. It'll be me and John speaking to that item.
Okay, well, why don't we do this? Um, we've got a, a couple of different things about, um, about downtown, about, um, some other support stuff that we're doing. Let's, let's move those ahead of this one.
Sure did it.
Yes, sir. And that way we'll keep, uh, we gotta keep the library on, on track for, for those folks.
The six fifteen, yeah.
Yeah.
And we need to get out of here for Sheena.
And we need to be out of here by seven. Okay.
So which one are we, I'm sorry, are we moving?
Uh, so, yeah, we're gonna move, uh, actually, the next one, we will keep there. Number seven is discussion and appropriate action on establishing guidelines and framework for downtown redevelopment. Here real quick. And so I wanted to be clear on this. So, uh, we're gonna talk through different options and, um, so if you, if you didn't get a chance to read the background, this is specifically about, we have people that are doing things in the city. Doing good things, improving things in the city, and, uh, it's best to have more of a unified effort. And so what they're looking at doing is trying to, um, they, they came to staff saying, hey, we wanna do some stuff, but we wanna do it in coordination with what the city is doing for any of the public spaces. So not talking about their specific properties. They have rights to their specific properties and they'll do with, uh, as, as they see fit, according to the codes on their properties. What they're looking for is, um, how can we work together to improve the public, uh, spaces around there, uh, in collaboration so that we're all doing it unified? Uh, so, uh, for that, did you have anything else that you wanted to cover on that?
Yeah, I, I'll just mention that, yeah, there wasn't a lot of documentation, uh, because this, something that came up on Wednesday as we were preparing the agenda. Uh, I got a call from Mr. Kemp, who's here, here tonight, and he was asking about sidewalk improvements and basically what's the level, what's the amount of latitude the city's comfortable with for these owners to make improvements to the sidewalks and be plantings and do other things that they might wanna do, expand the sidewalk. And, you know, my answer was, well, I really don't know. I haven't had that conversation with the council. I, I, my original thought was we might engage a downtown master plan effort and I, I, we could still do that. I'm a little reticent to do that at this point, cause we've got a lot of money being spent on planning and I don't really wanna add to that amount. Not that it, anyway, so that's part of the reason for this discussion. One of the things I would like to discuss, and I think, uh, I see that Josh brought in some, some show boards of some kind I haven't seen, so we'll see what those are. But, okay, these are the ones from before, okay. I did notice the corner was bent, so maybe they've been, they've been brought out. But, um, I did wanna have some discussion with the council about, you know, they're gonna do quite a bit of engineering with this. There, there are some creative ways that we can approach downtown redevelopment and leverage the efforts that they're making, um, into the things that they're doing and, and see if they would be willing to expand some of that into areas that the city would care about. And what I mean by that is if they're looking at, um, renovating the buildings they own, and I think there's something like twelve? How many buildings? What? Not yet, but maybe that's the goal or, but, so, so they've got a number of buildings that they've got their sights on and some that they already own. They're gonna do some substantial, you know, renovation around those efforts. If the city has a desire, the city, in this case, when I, when I use that term, I'm talking about the city council, um, has a desire to see, uh, changes made at Houston Square and, uh, September Square, would it be prudent to have this same group tell us, inform us, what types of changes it'd like to see? From my vantage point, from an administrative vantage point, the thing that I would counsel the city to do at this stage is to look at ways to leverage the downtown redevelopment so that we improve ultimately revenue, but, but tourism and sales tax dollars and, and the economy, that, that historic downtown, the, the economy in that area. Um, and I, I think there's probably, you know, no better group of stakeholders to involve than the business owners themselves and ask them, okay, what, what types of things do you think would, would, what types of improvements to September and, and Houston Square and to the area overall, uh, would have that outcome, would, would drive tourism, would drive, uh, additional sales tax dollars, et cetera. And so the things I'm thinking about are parking and sidewalks and aesthetics and, you know, the things that we can invest in, you know, taking overhead electric and where it is currently and moving it to less unsightly areas and that kinda stuff. You know, how do we improve our look and feel downtown? Um, and normally I would do that, and, uh, in the past, we've done that through a, a master planned effort. We're gonna bring in landscape architects and engineers and we spend two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars to, to have that effort engineered. And we have a lot of stakeholder meetings and discussions with council and the public and that kinda thing. But, um, an alternative approach could be to leverage this group and say, okay, well, you tell us what you think you'd be willing to do. You put up the money to, to do the engineering and maybe the city sits at the table and helps to pay for some of that effort and maybe they don't. I mean, that's all up to you all. But I think, um, I think we have an opportunity here to, to do something, to make, maybe approach it a little differently, but I just don't know what to do.
And another option for that is kind of a combination of that, and that is us working with the group, you know, of stakeholders, of, of, uh, people that live here, the people that we represent, to, um, basically to, to figure out what that looks like. Work with the chamber, I think would be a, a great one to work with, to figure out the scope of, um, what we need to look at in terms of streets and blocks and, and that. And then we've got two, uh, two and a half parks that are right around here. We've got September Square, Houston Square, and then Lines Park not too far away. So if we start looking at those, those, um, we don't wanna boil the ocean. We don't wanna like look at the entire city on a, on a, uh, square foot by square foot basis, but maybe it's figuring out what that scope looks like. Figuring out very high level design, um, and functional requirements for, especially for public spaces. And then start drilling that down and saying, okay, so we wanna do an actual design for this space so that over the course of the next five years, they can do their part, we can do our part, others can do their part. But if anybody wants to do something out in front of the coffee shop or out in front, whomever wants to do it, they can follow along with that same kinda thing.
Well, the, the idea would be that it'd be tight, like, not doing a hodgepodge where.
Exactly.
One person do their thing and others do another and there's, there's no master plan or vision for how it all connects together. Which is usually the city's role. And I believe, I believe I kinda shared that with you all back when we did a proclamation a couple of months back. I, I kinda shared, you know, the city really needs to be the drivers to do this in a certain respect, because you need to honor all, for all reasons, you just stated. You need to get those groups involved. The city's really the appropriate level to do that at.
Right. Alright, well, Josh, if you don't mind just presenting what you've got and, um, where can you put it that?
I said on this, uh, on this table, Josh.
I was, I was the acting here the last time.
I emailed you just now a slide, which you can possibly put on the screen. Um, I'm gonna talk first, so there's plenty of time.
Do you want the table to where?
Well, I don't, just, can I send it to you or?
Well, I did set it in front of the mayor, you like.
That's fine. I may wanna, I may wanna gesture to it, but.
But then I think last time you did it over.
This works.
Then the vacancy. That's what I said. Do you want to, let's, let's walk it or we?
I had worked with you the last time.
Okay, so.
Easy, Karen.
Thank you. Um, so first of all, you've, you've all seen this. This is not a new, a new, um, design for this area. Just give a little bit of background before we get started. So.
Actually, if we can just give context to the people that may not have seen this yet. So up at the top where it says A, uh, that's Dan's Meat Market. Houston Square is just up and right from there. Uh, that goes down Perris Street, uh, and then left is South on Fiorella, uh, past City Hall, you can see where that is, uh, up to right about where the, where the Lutheran church is.
September Square would be right about here.
Yep.
So our, our group, and just to remind everyone and, and for folks who are new, our group is made up of thirty five, uh, local families who pooled their money, uh, together and, uh, have made an investment fund to redevelop the downtown, um, purchase buildings and put a substantial amount of money into renovation and activation. As, as many of you know, uh, several of these buildings along here have been vacant for, um, years, maybe even more than a decade. And, um, we, we felt like there was some untapped potential and kind of decided to do something about it. Um, and so that's where, that, just to refresh on that. Today, our, our group owns this building here, which is the Dan's Meat Market. Uh, this is the news, former News Bulletin building, which if, if you recall, has two parts, which we just finished the renovation of. Still a few, uh, things left on that one, but, um, that renovation is largely complete, which except for the landscaping. And then the, this is the, uh, I office here. So we, we own these, these three buildings.
Respec is in which one now?
Respec is in the News Bulletin.
Okay.
So, so this brush will prescribe. Um, we also own the, the event center, which is next door here, um, for, for context. And we also, by the way, just, so everyone knows, we, we own the Alinger House, which is here, the former Francine Alinger House, uh, which is, which is right here. Um, we, we are getting ready to kick off, um, a multimillion dollar project at the Dan's Meat Market. And that's gonna involve bringing in a craft barbecue restaurant to that location. Can't share the name yet, but we've signed a top fifty Texas public, uh, craft barbecue operator for that space. It's, it's gonna be, um, really, really amazing for the city. Um, and going to put Castro on the map as sort of a destination for, uh, great barbecue in the state of Texas. Um, so we're, we're very excited about that and we're getting ready to kick this off. And what you see here is substantially what it will look like. Um, that is to say, there's gonna be a beer garden back here, there'll be a little playground, um, there's gonna be, um, sort of this, uh, seating out here with a little bit of seating on the front, on the, on the paris side, um, et cetera. And together with that project, we've, uh, contracted with landscape architects to basically take from our property line on this building all the way here to the square and rethink the landscape of that entire stretch, um, so that we sort of have a unified approach to it. Um, not only in terms of all the parking that goes, so there's parking here, for example, there's parking here today, today there's parking even in this space. So rethink that from, from start to finish. Um, and that project will kick off probably in the next two months. We'll break ground on that in the next two months. Uh, we're very, very close, have even hired, um, and, uh, a contractor at this point to, to get that kicked off. So we're, we're very far along on that. And what our, our ask to you as the city council is that one of the things that we would like to do is to rethink this stretch of sidewalk. And we don't, but, we don't wanna do that in the back. We don't wanna do that on our own. We wanna be good citizens and do that aligned, aligned with a long-term plan for the downtown. So if we don't go spend a bunch of money to redo this and then we all decide in, in five years that we wanna do it totally different and we wasted a bunch of money tearing it, we need to tear it up and redo it.
Or we're gonna tear out sewer lines.
Exactly. Well, we have, we have to move sewer lines or we need to put utilities underground or whatever it may be. We, we're gonna spend the money to do this, we would like to spend the money to do this, we would like to do it aligned to, to a long-term plan. And we ourselves are willing to contribute to the formation of that plan. So the landscape architects who did this, for example, um, what we have, what we would propose to do, to the extent the city council is willing, is to think about a plan that includes this stretch for certain. Um, which we think is as sort of the core of the downtown in terms of where the businesses are, where the tourists go, et cetera. And, and, and where, you know, when we do a Fiorella Friday also, that is, and, or a, uh, old fashioned Christmas, that that is, is concentrated today. So we think it's a, a good, a good start for, for as we think about the, the downtown and the core locations that we do that in today. You wanna set that down? Are you, are you doing okay? I don't mean to make you tired, though, holding that. So, um, this is, this is, uh, so our ask is basically, help us, if you're willing to let us help in this process, that is to say, put some of the designers and landscape architects and the folks who've helped us to create these plans until now. If, 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 if you would be interested and willing, we would, we, we would like to put those folks to work for the city to start to develop a high-level plan. And when I say a high-level plan, it's something that people can look at, they can comment on, they can say, hey, this is. hey, this is something that is aligned to where we want to go. The next step after that would be for the city, and this is really something that would be out of scope for our group, but for the city to invest in a full plan of engineering and landscape design that you could hand to a contractor and say, go do this, and that's aligned to the plan. And that does not mean that we're going to redo all of this in the next three months or even in the next three years. What it means rather is that over time, as money becomes available, either public money in terms of from the city, whether it's from grants or whether it's from private money, development happening along this stretch, every person who goes at it to redo their section or has money to redo some part of a park, does it align to the long-term plan? And we all have this vision for what it should be and over time we'll realize that. But to do that, we need real contractable, that is to say, we can hand them to a contractor and say, please build me this, it needs to look like that. Without that, it's gonna be just too high level and we're not gonna get the details right in terms of drainage and utilities and all those things that we need to get right if we're gonna do this properly and after a long.
I was just gonna mention a couple of things. This is more partly for the council's education. There you go. Get that.
Arnie saves the day again.
Where's the, where's the wood picture that was, that was sitting on there? I hope it's, yeah. Yeah, if you want to move that.
Yeah, let's move the table and.
So I'll talk while we're doing this. You want to move it back here?
Sure.
One of the things we have to think about from an engineering standpoint is drainage. Very small, but important things. When we're looking at bringing the sidewalks, it's all interconnected. And it's a little bit like touching a.
Excuse me real quick, Josh, could you move that back over here so that the camera can see us also? Thanks.
So that would be my concern with some of the things Josh was sharing is, yeah, it sounds great, but from a city perspective, if you're designing underground utilities, so for instance grease traps, depending on the nature of business and types of business you have. One of the doctrines or things I've done in the past is we had a developer put together a communal grease trap. If you will, build the system. I can't remember if the city has been at all. We have suspended it small now. But basically that gave that developer the ability, they owned it, and then they had the ability to charge fees to have people connect to it. And the city could require that people connected it, right? So it was a revenue, it was a way for the developer to make their investment back. It was also a way for the city to have a sustainable grease trap system and preserve and protect our sewer system from grease, which is actually a pretty serious and important thing to develop down on a job like this. Another item was drainage, as I already mentioned. And the third was when we looked at like Francis plantings and trees and everything. In the past, one of the things we did was we used a landscape architect to design a subterraneous root system to preserve the sidewalks. The reason I bring these up is if those are the, if that's the level of detail and the level of investment that this city's interested in, and certainly one that I would recommend and consider, it sounds expensive, but it really, in the grand scheme of things, isn't. Then we really need to be very careful about who we're into this relationship because it can't just be that block. It's got, it has to be by nature. You just can't do one aspect of it. You have to make a commitment at some level and say, we're gonna do a project that goes from this area to this area so that engineers can plan, okay, there's the fall I have to have, and they can plan all those other pieces. And when you build it in, it doesn't, it's not a road, a bridge that goes nowhere. They actually connect one piece to another. So that's, I think it sounds great, everything you said, but that would be my concern. It's okay, but how do we effectuate that? How do you carry that out in such a way that you don't undermine a much larger process?
So as a part of this, we have put together some proposed, it's called, design principles for consideration, just to get the conversation started at the beginning of the day. If you don't mind, I'll just show those to you really quickly if you'd like. Let's just take.
I'll be your vanity, just tell me.
So I mean, the overall goal, of course, is to stay walkable and beautiful street case, opposed to focus on fostering community, right? That's what we all want out of the downtown. So focus initial efforts on an area from September Square to Houston Square. Now is merely a like, something is better than nothing approach to get started.
Well, realistically, from a program area, I mean, I think there's a lot of sense that goes into that. I don't know, you might be able, like, one day we might get rid of the public works area and redevelop that. And then we might want to extend that beyond Houston Square to the Public Works Yard. But for now, I think that's a very reasonable scope.
So move parking to one side of the street to accommodate sidewalk expansion or installation when needed. So today, the sidewalks are extremely narrow, you can barely walk to the breast. Anywhere, in many cases, it's just one, a simplified line. And so it's unsafe at the end of the day. And realistically, we have a substantial amount of parking in the downtown, not only here behind City Hall, but also at the square, where those additional small amount of parking on the streets make very little difference at the end of the day to the overall capacity. And this would allow us not only to widen one side of the street, as it would also allow us to install trees so that we can get tree coverage, which is the next one here. So in the summer, everyone knows it's hot as heck, you can barely walk, stretch if you don't have shade coverage. The idea would be over time that this whole area, we should add some more mature trees. And to Scott's point, that would involve a proper thought process about where the roots go, how do they go, how to make sure.
Well, I learned more about trees than I ever wanted to know during that process. It's the genus of trees. Where'd you get them from? What are they gonna grow? How do they grow? How much water do they need? There's an entire subset of expertise on trees in downtown areas.
Houston Square, tree coverage for entire area, while we take a substantial amount of parking. So this would be basically, energy's putting trees where there's asphalt today, you know, at regular spacing such that you wouldn't impact the parking that's there, but you would get tree coverage for the effect of the whole square, which may be possible, first time we've been there in the summer, which today is nearly impossible because of the heat. The next one. Use native plants native to Texas wherever possible. I think this is important, not only for their power systems, but also because, you know, that's virtual box and those are the plants that we all grew up with and that are leaving.
And you don't have to replace them in two years.
That's right, that's right. Create infrastructure to underground utilities over the long run. We all know that's expensive, but if we're gonna tear up sidewalks, we might as well put in conduits and do that in a thoughtful way so that when it is time to do utilities, we're not having to rethink that and spend that money twice. Install over time attractive street lighting, which minimizes light pollution. So this would be something that is, could be a design that we use throughout the city. Add, again, not because we're gonna go install lights everywhere all over the city, but rather because over time, perhaps people even want to donate a light to put on their street and you can install light according to the outlines that we established here.
Well, there's, and I don't know if the city's had this discussion before. I know that our parks, the lighting that we look at is all in accordance with dark skies.
Yep.
Dark skies initially. So is that something the city has adopted?
Yes.
So that would definitely be a part of that.
Boy, I say again to that.
Yes.
I'm an amateur, so I'm telling you, I'm from New York, you have to go six hours away.
Yep.
To get any kind of.
You gotta go to Castroville from New York.
Very common in the Northeast.
Beautiful, so glad to hear that.
And a good design element for the new subdivisions, silly little thing, but it actually makes a big difference is street signs and lighting, how that's configured. I think that as we continue this, it would be something different for downtown, but that same kind of attentive detail, I think, is very helpful.
Instead of using pavers or the decorative materials from the streets, again, I don't say we're gonna do it, but let's look at it and see what options are, how much they cost and potentially do that in case of asphalt. And that's it. So again, the idea is to get high-level standards that we could hand to a high-level designer who does this type of work here, that we, again, the public can then comment on, we can make adjustments to as needed, that we can hand to an engineering and/or a landscape design firm to come up with a proper plan. Last time I was here, Herb, you asked me, how do we move this forward, when we do next? Realistically, we're at a critical moment right now to move this forward because we break ground on this in about two months. And so if we're gonna do these sidewalks in accordance with the plan, we need to move with reasonable speed to get something that we can execute on and align with your vision and your goals and state goals for this area. That doesn't mean we're gonna be on sidewalks in two weeks, for two months rather, but, you know, we've got, we can't have a three year that's gonna happen. So that's why I have any questions from anyone on that?
Can I start? Let's start on this.
Well, I think, I've lived here now, this time, 23 consecutive years, and I've seen nothing done from the municipality about this kind of thing. There's been a few ideas and there's been a lot of people that did some work in independent groups, but I've never seen anything that turned into anything. So I'm very pleased that you're taking the initiative to start something, that you'll bring us an idea that, but I'd like to just elaborate a little bit about the city's expense in the project. I think it's wise for you to research the ordinances as part of your effort and come to us and tell us where you know that what you want to do is inconsistent with the current ordinances. Because that's where we've got to start as a body. We have to, we have to do something and decide whether we're gonna change ordinances that would allow this to happen. So I would, I think the burden is on you to go research the ordinances and tell us where the problems are and prioritize those problems so we can get the right part of the city focused on the problem, if there's one.
I would only suggest that, that I would be surprised if anything we want to do is outside of the ordinances that exist today. I think, think about it in more of a positive than a negative sense, that is to say, what do we want to do here in a bigger sense? Because the ordinances almost certainly do not oblige us to put conduits under the sidewalks for future utilities undergrounding, right? They just don't. They probably oblige us to have a certain width and, you know, this height, whatever. And that's it. We want to do more. We want to do this. So I think that it's not an ordinance question for us at this moment because we could do the bare minimum.
Then that makes it easy for you in the beginning. But then once we've, once we've done that and we understand if there's an ordinance problem, then we need to get into the meat and potatoes of, the city staff needs to be brought in and work with you and see if there's serendipity in the plan. And then they can come and tell us what they recommend we should do. Because these six people up here aren't gonna do it. I mean, there's no way you're gonna get us to be able to do anything.
You don't want us to.
As a, as a body, until the city comes to us and asks us. So somebody's gotta identify the work, prioritize the work, and get the city staff to look at it and comment on it and then tell us what they recommend we should do. I think this is a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cherry?
I think it's a great idea. I really do. I think the big issue's gonna be how to fund it, you know, where you come up with the money. I mean, I know y'all privately are investing a great amount of money, but as far as the city contributing to that process, I mean, that's just something us as a council will have to, have to decide. But I'm already catching some slack from some of my constituents about if we're gonna do that on Fiorella and Parrish Street, why don't we do something somewhere else in town, you know, on other streets? You got, you got some history there, so I guess you could, you know, use that as your excuse too, you know? You have some really old buildings there and part of the culture of the town is there. But I think we need to be fair to everybody in town, you know, not just, not just y'all. I think it's just something we're gonna have to work through. Dialogue's usually the best tool.
Councilman King?
I'm all for it. It is our historic downtown. I think it's, we pride ourselves as Castroville. We want people to come see us. We want friends and neighbors. We want guests. We want visitors to come visit us. And when you go look at other historic downtowns, they are nice. And I'm appreciative of this group of citizens, the 35 families that are pushing forward on this because they're renovating this downtown and how we share that and everything, we need to start entering those discussions. So yes, I'm all for this.
Okay. Councilman Kerry?
I have seen probably three renovation plans or redesigns for Houston Square, maybe two for September Square, you know, never moved a stone. I think that the fact that you're coming in with private ownership and offering to do, you know, you've already done the design work for public spaces, which is fantastic. And I do believe that in the multitude of council wisdom is found. And the fact that we have the input from your designers, that, you know, this is a good, what you've got up here is a very good framework. I had, along with Ms. Garrett, worked on the historic design guidelines for the city a decade ago or more. And we published that and it had some very particular guidelines as to materials and colors and so on and so forth. And I really would love to see this fleshed out the same way. Be able to say, look, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do anything like this, stick with this palette and so on and so forth. And so I think that maybe that should be codified, when we have to do that. So I'm encouraged, I'm excited. I think this is a wonderful project. I'll do whatever we can do to make it move forward.
Great. Councilwoman Martinez?
I think it's a great idea. I've lived in the oldest city in North America and everything. I love historical stuff. But I would also pull in the other businesses that are going to benefit from this and get their input of how they want it to look in front of their businesses. You mentioned September Square. American Legion uses that religiously. It's in their bylaws and everything.
So does the Catholic Church.
Yeah.
Religiously. Sorry, I couldn't let that go.
Darren? Pull them in, get their input. I, that's what I like to see because they're gonna benefit from it too. However, they would, it would be more frugal and be more on board if they have a say, an equal say. And maybe they can find, you know, pitch in some on the way. Because like everybody else has mentioned, yeah, we gotta do stuff that benefits the whole city. And yes, this would benefit the whole city, but we can't do it to where it sends us in the wrong direction financially. Because we got a lot of stuff we gotta take care of here in the city. But that's just my input. And I agree with the ordinances, we gotta make sure it follows the ordinances. Like Herb said, if there's something in the ordinance that don't go match with what you have planned, maybe there is a reason why it's in the ordinance. So it's just, yeah, but I, I'm very hopeful for it. I very, very much am.
The fact is that we are looking at investing in the city. And an investment doesn't mean an expenditure. So if we are to do something to support this, it is us investing in our future. Sometimes the investment is for enjoyment. I like living in a nicer place. I do landscaping at my house because I think it's beautiful, not because it increases the value or because I just, I like it and I like the way it looks. I like being around it. I like living in that area. It's the same thing with the city. The other side is we have a fiscal responsibility because we got a lot of stuff to take care of here. So we can't let the beauty, like, I'm not gonna do beautification over fixing my plumbing. Same thing we can't do in the city. So we do need to find funding sources to be able to make this. I wrote down practical, achievable, affordable, and just plain better. So I think that it is a great idea, you know, some great points from council. We can't support just this group and we're not looking to. We have something that is directly in front of us. You have to start somewhere. You can't start by fixing everything. You start where there's a need. And right now, there's a need and it's right in front of us. And there's a need, we looked at the impact, the positive impact of businesses in Castroville, and it adds to the bottom line. The better the businesses do, the better our streets are gonna be. The better the businesses are, the more beautification we can do. The better the businesses do, the better the city does. That is really where, where our future is, in supporting that to support the residents. So while what they're asking for is this area right here, they've also said, let's take a look at an expanded area. They've made a suggestion based on what historic, the historic downtown district has been. But I think that it would be prudent to work with the chamber to identify and with the local business, well, work with the local businesses to ensure that they're in the chamber so that we can meet that 22. in the chamber so that we can meet that 22% goal that they have this year of membership. But to really have the chamber as the spokes, um, the, the voice of the businesses and work through this so that we can identify what all we want to take a look at. And then as a city, we're going to have to figure out what we can actually afford to do and prioritize that based on what people are wanting to do to improve their own areas. If there are places that don't want to do the improvement, then that could be omitted from the study and it just kind of depends, but that should be a city decision. We do need to identify the areas, the scope, um, the, um, and the funding. So if you look at what we have here on the background, um, we're discussing a specific request from a downtown redevelopment group to do, really it's three things. Understand what the city desires for long-term improvement to public spaces that will both enhance enjoyment of the spaces and reduce the impact on private properties in the area to make sure that we've got the parking that we need, that we've got the drivable streets where kids aren't running out into the street and getting smushed. We don't like that. But it's to, to accomplish those. Second, to work with the city to develop a staged approach to making those improvements so that they do take all of the considerations that we have as a city for utilities, for drainage, for any of the infrastructure things that we have. And then three, we need to identify the funding sources to assist with the planning and implementation, whether it's private investment, whether it's public investment, where is our return on that? So I think that really that's what we're looking at is having city staff go back and take a look at what their recommendations are on, on the scope of what this should be. Work with the chamber, work with this group that has something immediate in front of them to determine what that scope is, what the area that we're looking at, what the, the scope of investigation that we are going to need to do to accomplish that and get at least a rough order of magnitude on how much it's going to cost to do the different sections and then bring that back to us for a final decision.
We got, there's a couple of things.
Yep.
First, I guess, one of the things that'd be helpful to me know from this council is how committed, ready to spend money are you on making a improvement, street improvements and aesthetic improvements, sidewalk improvements, water and sewer improvements to this, the, the area between September Square and Houston Square? If that's something we want to undertake, we can figure out how to fund it, but understand it's going to juggle our CIP. It's going to juggle the timeframe of when we're going to make those investments. So that's question number one. How, how committed are you? Is this something you want us to pursue? If you don't, the, the other option is, okay, you know, Josh and his group can still make their improvements, but they won't necessarily, there's no law that says we have to go in and tie everything together and have underground, you know, utilities and do the whole thing. They, they can still make a lot of improvements that are, are superficial, if you will, to the surface of it and to create along the way some guidelines for other people who might come behind them and make those improvements. So one is a very large scope, very big project and costly. I don't, I couldn't even tell you the numbers, but let's just say 2 million because it's water and sewer. The big, 60% of your cost would be underground. 60 to 80% is underground and, and the surface level stuff is actually pretty expensive. And we can get grants for sidewalks and that kind of stuff. So the surface level isn't, isn't nearly as, as challenging as the underground stuff. The question is, again, do we do that? Or do we say, you know what, we're okay with, present us a plan on the sidewalk immediately in front of the buildings you're wanting to change and what, you know, what the scope is for that? And then maybe we design some, some guidelines around that. Which, I, I think there, there's an A or a B. Would you agree on it? There's kind of, those are our two options?
Can I suggest there's a C, sort of in the middle, which would be a, rather than executing on the plan and going and moving dirt and fixing all the sidewalks and all that, rather just like a plan that is executable over time.
But again, my concern would be you can't do that, you just can't do, you can't do that piecemeal. You can't say, well, we're only going to fix the sewer and water from, in your, in front of your position, in front of your place. We can't do that.
To be clear.
It has to be, A, we have to do the, the sections for the scope of the project and you kind of have to do them all at once. You can't do the drainage in piecemeal. You can't do the water sewer piecemeal. You can't do this re-scrap, grease trap piecemeal. You got to do everything all at once for the scope.
I think that a better, maybe a way to look at this is if you make changes to the street, pretty much guaranteed there's sewer running down the middle of the street. If you make changes to the side of the street where the water is, where the gas is, then that could become an issue. But I think that, I, I think that what they're looking for is what are those things? So I think that if we draw bounds around, here's where you have freedom to do it and here's where you don't.
But there is, as I'm saying, there is no free, like, this downtown, I, I don't have to look at a map to tell you there's water on both sides and there's sewer down the middle, like you said, and there's gas probably on both sides. I don't know that for a fact, but there probably very little local room. More than likely, the utilities that are underneath there are 60 years old and need to be replaced. That's, that's the story of our downtown. I don't believe, I mean, I've only been here since January of last year. I think you all would actually know more about that than I would, John would to a certain extent.
I have the experience.
Right, well, I know. Since I've been here, we've blown out that corner like twice. So I know it's, it's terrible. The downtown area is terrible. Now, the, the concept back to the, to the larger community is, and I think Mayor, you did an excellent job a while back. You were tying together how sales tax and tourism actually benefits and lowers our property tax for the entire community. And that's not, I mean, that's not a pie in the sky, Pollyanna approach. It's really, it's true. It's a fact, it's, it's something you can tie back to real numbers. So the city should look at this as investment and we should be critical about that. Like how much, what is our ROI? Because you can't overspend on projects. You can be, you can do things with a lack of prudence. But if you approach it as an R, a return on investment and look at, well, how can we encourage tourism and, and economy in the downtown area? You will and should see a return on investment that will benefit the taxpayers. So I think that argument's pretty easy to make. But again, the question is, because I can honestly, I, I could defend both approaches. I don't, I don't think one is better than the other. Certainly, it would be really cool to see this, this massive project in the downtown area, but, but again, it will come at a cost. There is an opportunity cost to do that. And the opportunity cost is, you know, okay, the streets money that we're planning on spending elsewhere in the city, more than likely would be relocated to some of the streets in downtown for this period of time, for the next two years or whatever the time period is. It's just a question of, do you want to do that? Because you're saying, we want to move now and I, I fully respect that, but the cities, again, you just can't do a piecemeal. I don't, I don't think there is a C that, that says you do this piecemeal unless it's superficial. And by superficial, I mean, it's just a scape, it's just a streetscape. There's a lot of improvements you can do without changing elevations. So you leave the streets and the curbs, you basically leave stuff the way they are so you aren't changing the water, the drainage, and it's all surface level. And you can make a lot of improvement that way. You can really make it look night and day different, but you aren't going to have all that other stuff, grease traps and, you know, you're still going to have the water and sewer that's going to have to be replaced at some point. And one of the things we've been looking at is pipe bursting. And I don't know how many of these areas are eligible. Pipe bursting is a technique where you don't have to dig. You can actually just send, it's like, Phil could speak to it better than I can. You, you basically bust the pipes in place and, and put in a new liner where they, where the old one was or, or expanded. And now you have a brand new pipe underground and you never dug a hole, right? At least not in that area. So that may be a, a potential option so that we aren't disrupting the surface level improvements. But I can't, we would need to investigate that with your group and probably prioritize that if we ended up doing this on a, on what I'm going to call a piecemeal approach. So I, I think that's the decision y'all have to make and I know it's kind of all at once and we, I don't, I wouldn't, I don't think it's fair to ask you to make it tonight. I think you need to think about it and, and really consider it. And I can bring you back, okay, here's what we'd have to move around. Here's the opportunity cost that we're looking at doing. I can certainly do that as part of the CIP. That's what was coming to you on February 22nd. So we could have kind of two versions of the CIP that we look at, at our next meeting. One that says this is, we make, we emphasize downtown and the other says we, we do things the way we were planning to do them without, and doing the downtown at some point in the future.
I think that theoretically, we are at a very high level, we're in favor of it. But when it gets down to the brass tacks of the actual spending the money, I think that, that's where we're going to run into this. So I really think that, I think it's worthwhile looking at investing. I don't think it's worthwhile redirecting all of our capital improvements just to this one area because it's the-
But I'm not suggesting that's what you'd have to do. You'd still be able to do your parks project, there's projects you'd be able to do, but-
I understand that.
Water and sewer, we, we definitely have to redirect on some level. I need to price this out and see-
And that's what I was saying.
That's what we'd have to do. We have to figure out what's the magnitude, what are the opportunity costs.
Right. So I think that we need to take a look at what can be changed, what can't be changed, just so that they know what constraints they have. Because the improvements that they're making don't need to be made all at once. I know that they would prefer to, but if we have to wait on it for a year because we're going to replace the sewer line and if we have to redirect that from a major portion of the city just to do it right here, that's not the right thing to do. But if it is something that can be maneuvered around and we're not, we're just changing the direction of where some of this stuff is going with minor redirection, because most of it has to be done anyway, then I think that's worth looking at. But we, right now, it's all theoretical. And so I think we just need to nail it down to say three things. One, what, based on what they are looking at doing, what utilities do we have in place? What kind of modifications would need to happen? Whether it's that, that we would say, you may make these, you know, an, an investment in this, or we may need to wait on this, or we can do this now, determining what that is. The other side is with future expansion, if we move utilities underground, what does that look like? How deep? Where do they need to be placed? And I think that's an engineering thing, but just giving some guidance on that. That's one portion of it. The other portion of it is looking at the, the potential for doing something that is more of a master plan design. That is not, it is something that is immediately actionable by those that want to action it and looking at the scope of where the city want, might want to do that and where area businesses want, might want to do that so that we can encourage-
So are you speaking to like a surface level improvement at that, at that stage? Because you can't-
Design.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm saying, yes. So basically, right. Designing it out so that it is, I think his word was constructible?
Contractable.
Contractable, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I like it. But it's constructible, basically.
Based on, on our-
And then, one second. And then determining what that is, what that scope is, where do we need to look at that? And then we can come back and say, okay, so this is about what it would cost to do it in this area. And this is why we think it would be prudent because the chamber has businesses that want to make improvements here. We have other things that are going on here and just help me make that determination. Sorry. Councilman?
I just think that from what I've heard from Scott, that this is probably a three-phase project right here. I mean, one, the first phase is Parrish Street and then second phase is the front of City Hall and the third phase is up toward the highway. And it's got to be time phased because like you say, we can't do it all at once. It's ridiculous.
And we're not talking about constructing it right now. We're talking about designing it so that it can be constructed. Right. And that we, we're not piecemealing it together.
Well, again, that's, but that, again, there's an A to Z, all of it, under, underground. If you're going to do the underground, water, sewer, the gas, electric, potentially internet should also be something to look at, then that's all subterraneous. And again, I think I shared this with the council, you have the benefit of having a city manager that actually oversaw a project like this and there's not that many in Texas that redesigned and redeveloped an entire downtown. Ronup did it, we did it, Kenny did it. There's been a handful.
ALOTUS did it.
That have gone through that effort. What's that?
ALOTUS did a pretty major facelift last decade.
Burleson did it and then I'm thinking there's another one. Anyway, handful of managers. I'm not sure that, not, I was super excited to be a part of it, I'm not sure I really would, but that said, there is, if you're going to do the underground, you really need, it's a commit, like, you don't want to do the surface level. You do the underground first and you do it by stages. You do the water first, then the sewer, then the gas, then the telecom, then, you know, whatever. You, you have those different phases and all that underground is phase one. And you basically do all the underground first and then you start, and then the surface happens pretty quickly. The underground takes, because you're coordinating all those other parties. Now, in our instance, we are water, sewer, gas, electric. So we actually, we're only, the only thing we coordinate is telecom if they have any underground here or if they have any desire to put in some type of program, assistant for us. So there's actually very little coordination on that part, but it's still a hellacious amount of work. So that's why I'm saying, I, I think we can bring back kind of a, a scope for you all to think about pricing and that thing, but that's the really decision you need to make. Keeping in mind that these folks really want to do something quickly, the next three to four months. And that can be accomplished if, if you do determine to pull, to the trigger on a larger investment, larger project. The, the real challenge is going to be dealing with that water and, you know, the underground utilities for their section of, of development and how we time that to make sure that we aren't causing issues the rest of it. The other thing that this brings, Josh, is from experience, is, you know, the existing businesses will have some pain from the redevelopment and that, you know, ideally, everybody's on board and everybody's seeing it raw and they love the, the project. But it can look great on paper, but then when you start to see the, the actual construction taking place and it doesn't happen, you know, over a weekend, it happens over months. So that means months of things being torn up and inconveniences for your customers and the people who have operating businesses today and their customers and everything they're doing. And that can also be a tremendous challenge to, to work through with those folks.
And right now, it's even longer that we found out some of the construction materials. There are six months to a year down the road to even get the materials to us. So-
But I think that, I think that if we approach this in a phased approach, find out what, what is not affected, if you look at it in terms of the development that you're going to do on your property itself. I don't know that there's any change that needs to happen to the utilities there if you're not changing the drainage, if you're not changing anything else.
Well, you talked about expanding. It just depends on what they want to do. If they want to expand the sidewalk and change parking to one side of the-
Yeah, I'm getting there. So-
Sorry.
Have them take a look at what they're doing right there. Have us take a look at, with the expansion on, in front of their properties, things that they want to do and then look at how that can be expanded, what it would cost. And I think that we need to figure out what that looks like over the next couple of weeks. The rest of it, the, what I would call the, the expanded investigation, but we've got to get it to a point where there's actually dollars to it. Because we can't make a decision, I mean, I, I think we can make a decision theoretically, this is a good direction.
That's what I'm saying. I, I think I can get some rough numbers for the February 22nd meeting and look at, get two versions of the CIP. If one includes this downtown with the major investment and one that doesn't. And then it's just a decision on y'all's part.
Please.
Are you asking just for the planning of it though? You don't want to put in a four-foot sidewalk and then later on, or put in a six-foot one and then later on, it should have been a four-foot.
I'm asking for the planning, basically. What I'm hearing from Scott though is that the planning is insufficient in some senses. That the planning is, I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, I, I'm just saying, it depends on what level of planning you're, are we, are we replacing underground and doing all that stuff or-
He's saying, surface level planning is not enough, but service and subterranean level planning.
The idea was that, for example, if we're going to tear up sidewalks, should we go ahead and install a conduit for future electrical? Exactly. Right? That's the kind of thing that we don't know. And then we're going to crack it off. And if so, how? And that's why we were looking-
And where?
Engineeringable, constructible plans that we could sort of execute against your future, whatever you're going to do in some future moment, rather than tear up sidewalks.
Councilman Kerry?
Because the infrastructure is the city's. You know, having a, a real inventory of what's there and what condition it's in, I think, is essential. I know we ran cameras through sewer lines in other parts of the city just to see what the conditions were and it was very informative. And I mean, I think that would be our first step is to find out what our, our infrastructure looks like and whether or not we need to do a major overhaul or if, you know, some of the mains have been replaced recently.
It's terrible and none of it's been replaced. I'm serious. I, I-
Yeah, I know. He said he's got five lakes on this block.
Well, but, yeah, we, we don't, we don't even know where we are at this point, on our, on those, on those, on the infrastructure, water, sewer, gas. A little bit, yeah, but, you know, the, we, it's hard for us to, to say, let's take this step without even that little bit of information, so.
But I guess, in the large picture, though, we could kinda, without worrying about what's going on underneath, that, that's finite planning, but if we just had this vision of what it's gonna look like, and you all have a vision there, do we have, we don't have a vision from our standpoint. You know, for instance, if we paved the street with pavers, pavers pick up real easy, and when you go in and put utilities under there, uh-
Unless you, but basically with concrete.
Well, no, you'd use a, an asphalt underneath that concrete, you'd, you'd use a, a base material, an asphalt, a salt cut pad, you, so it's really easy to, to, because the pavers are just sort of the surface, but, but we want pavers there. So some of this, you don't have to completely rebuild everything, you can just go in there and, and, and put surface to it. In a, in a planning situation, in a lofty view, do we care what, do we not want sidewalks on one side? That's a simple question, and, and that kinda helps then. We don't have to go do that today, but if that's where we're going down the road to look at it, and I think, at least that's what I was kinda thinking you were asking, is-
I didn't want to lose that. I was hoping that we would have, not tonight necessarily, but, since it's on like some design principles that look like this, that everybody says, yeah, those look good, like, and why can't turn those over to the designer, we can go and, like, into this high level view, right?
High level view.
But the high level, that helps us, but it doesn't tell us, you know, how wide can the sidewalk speed, doesn't tell us how high the curvy should be, it doesn't tell us what's the material that's going into the, into the sidewalk, that you guys, that you, the council wants for the whole, right? And that's where we would have to spend a bit more money to get something up, and that's just surface, as, as Scott noted, but if we wanna do it properly, perhaps use the pen scope. I'm not, I'm not here to advocate for the redo of all of this, as much as I would love it, but at the same time, I do understand the restraints.
If we had unlimited funds and personnel, then yes.
I, I have a question. Going, you know, been down Parrish Street a lot of times, I know some of the businesses across the street from you do use their sidewalk to put their products out for selling and everything, so if we're, you know, shifting traffic to park on their side, or, you know, affecting their, how is it, how is it gonna affect, because I know shirts and stuff, or whatever it's called, they do a lot of business.
You'd still have to have a sidewalk, it doesn't matter.
No, we're not okay to limit sidewalks.
But, no, no, I mean, but it could affect them.
I think your point is that we need to make sure that we're looking at-
Yes.
Well, and that's, that's what we were talking about earlier, is-
Oh, I know.
There's impact, any change that we make, it has cascading impact on other areas.
Yes.
Whether it is the businesses right across the street-
Yep.
Or the homes around the corner.
Correct.
And so, we have to do this slowly and methodically, we have to do it well. There is something in front of us that says, we should probably move on this. It doesn't mean that we should move on it right now and stop everything else to make it happen, respectfully, but I think that this is a good opportunity for us to, to go forward. Do you feel like the city staff has the bandwidth to take a look at this and come work with this group to define what that scope might be, to help determine some-
Numbers?
A rough plan with some costs behind it?
Yeah, yes, I just, the, the question is, are we looking at, again, are we looking at a, just a superficial level, or are we looking at a, a complete redesign? Do you want us to look at both of those, or just one?
You don't wanna step over a dollar to pick up a dime, so-
Yeah, right, that's one of that, that's what I was, I was a little confused, because you're right, Phil, that's what they originally came with, just a superficial, we just wanna do this. But when we talk about installing underground conduit, that's a little bit of an issue, anyway. And I, yeah, again, I mentioned like tree scaping, and like, it can get very complex very quickly. I just wanna know how complex it's gonna get.
Well, based on the experience that you have in this area, it is looking at all aspects of it. But before we look at all aspects, we have to understand what those aspects are. That's why I think that it would be good, I know that you've had some conversations about it, and you've been very open about your plans, and that's the right way to do it, make sure that people are aware of it, make sure that staff is aware of it, so that we can react to it, but I, I just, I feel like we need to get it to, to the point where we're out of the theoretical, and let's come back on, on a subsequent meeting with an actual plan. If council is supportive of having city staff pursue something like that, so that they can bring something back, then I think that's probably the best way to approach it.
I'm all for the theoretical, and, and definitely, we need to get some details and some costs in front of us.
For my benefit, I think I heard everybody say this, but his list of proposed guiding principles, any objections or comments about those? Because I feel like, Josh, that's a pretty good place to start.
Yeah.
I think all of them speak to kinda the culture of, of Castroville, and some of the concerns of the citizens that you would probably run across as they talk about, you know, what's the lighting, if you like it. So, as a starting place, I thought they were very good.
I think it's very focused on usability, it's very focused on beauty, it's very focused on just its overall effectiveness to make it a nicer place. So I think it's a great opportunity for us to take a look at it in a smaller area, so that we're, so much, city, you're talking about four and a half square miles?
Well, Matt suggests that maybe with, with that feedback, what I would suggest for Josh and your group is, what you propose, I think is acceptable from a superficial improvement basis. And if you want to try and put, as Paul, as Councilman Carey stated, a list of design guidelines for yourselves and for others to follow, that would look at superficial improvements, what your, your kinda, your thoughts are as far as sidewalk treatment, that kinda stuff, I think that's perfectly appropriate, and something that you don't necessarily need my staff and, and our input on, other than the conversation that we've heard from council. I, I think that's a good place to start, take it back to your groups and say, hey, let's, let's see what we can come up with, the city said they're good with allowing us to make these improvements, they just wanna see what, what we're gonna come back with, and then how can we replicate that for other people who wanna do something similar. Is that a, a good representation of the kind of business?
I think we're gonna see, we're gonna see money spent, we're gonna see progress made on the private property, apparently very soon, and, you know, what, how we swerve into that as, as a city is, is important, really is.
So, and even doing that, there will be opportunities, I think, for city and, and private partnership, like I said, there's, I think there's grant funds we can go out and apply for, where the city can offset some of those costs, and, and hopefully do more than just that, so, for instance, they're looking at just doing this area, and they present a design back that you all like, we might look at, okay, can we do grant, and let's do the sidewalks on both sides for two blocks, right, and get, get a grant to do that. There may be a very, very, I think there's very high possibility that the city could participate in, in that way. The secondary part of this, out of, one of those conversations is for the staff, with John, but, you know, one of the questions that, I know you're here too, but you're not gonna be involved.
You said you're here.
Is for staff to evaluate, okay, what would a non-superficial approach look like, and how much would that cost, and what would, how would that impact us? And I do believe we have the bandwidth to do it, but just don't hyper-focus on the numbers, that's all I ask. I mean, they'll be big numbers, and we'll, we'll do our best to, to estimate those, but that, that's, we can do that. I mean, we know, we do have a general idea of what the, we don't need to go camera the lines, I don't think, honestly, because I think we have enough work order data, et cetera, that we can look at, to know-
What's there?
What the, what the status of the, at least the water and sewer, the gas, is a whole other story.
Scott, we're happy to make, put at your disposal the teams that are working on this, for that.
Be careful what you offer. That's all I say.
We're happy to help.
Well, thanks for paying for the downtown master plan.
Do we hear landscape? TBG architects.
Where are they at? Okay. I don't know why I asked, because they're, they're landscape architects also.
Well, no, no, sorry, TBG is the landscape architects. The main architect, the building architect is the home architects, okay, it's all sorts.
Very reputable.
And in fact, the, it's a 250-person architecture firm, the founder and CEO did all of the drawings, and is like personally involved in all this, because he just fell in love with it.
That's pretty cool.
We like Castroville, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Nope.
Unfortunately not, but we can, we can follow up afterward, yes, please?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, uh, next, we're gonna go to, we are moving around just a little bit, again, we're gonna move the-
I have a landscape member that wanted to participate, and he's not here yet, so if you wanna skip us along the way?
All right.
Let's go to the downstairs.
Thank you, anyone?
Yeah, let's do the, um, this is number-
What's the number?
Number fifteen.
That's Darren.
Hey, that's me.
That's you.
We had closed with the city hall.
Todd closed it.
All right, so-
I discussed it in the noise a while ago, that's-
Thanks. So Deborah, we're gonna move fifteen up. This item at six twelve, thank you. This is discussion and possible action on funding options to preserve the Alsatian language and culture. So, I think first, we're gonna hear from Les and Patsy Sheerhart, from Les, and Patsy's there for support.
There you go.
Come on, keep your right hand and left hand, bro.
Get over. Ich bin der Les Sheerhart. Ich bin der fünfte Generation Casterville. Mine Familie, wir viel Familie, haben Elsatische Dialekt. Größte sind wir im 1800 und 1540 zum Castroville gekommen sind. Elsatisch ist ein wichtiger Dasein unserer Castroville-Erbe. Wir, als ich, als ich drücke, als wir unsere Sprache verloren haben, und nicht viel Castroville hätte keine Elsatische Rede. Teile ich fragen die zwei Weltkriege gesehen, unsere Eltern gesehen, als wir nicht so Elsatische Rede waren, Amerikaner, Amerikaner, man aus mir, dieche, und es geht zu sehen. Und wir sind immer gegangen mit, gegen die Schlangen gesehen. Zweite Generation zurück, über hundert, liegt im Elsat, im Castroville, keine Elsatische Freude, nur die Geste Rede. Hinter uns bislang, aus Swansea, Casterville, wurde eine Konversation im Elsatischen Kanon. Now, for those of you who might not have understood me-
I can every word.
I'll try to tell you in English. Good evening, I am Les Sheerhart. I'm a fifth-generation Castervillean. My family, like many families, have spoken the Alsatian dialect since we came to Casterville in 1845. Alsatian was an important part of the Casterville culture. However, it is sad that we have lost our language, and not many Castervilleans can speak Alsatian today. This was partly because of the two world wars. Our parents told us that we should, we were not to speak Alsatian, because the Americans would think we were German sympathizers, and we were at war with Germany. Now, an American was anyone who was not Alsatian, or of, or of Alsatian or Hispanic descent. Not a bad term, but also not a term of endearment. Two generations ago, more than a hundred people in Casterville spoke the Alsatian fluently. Today, fewer than twenty Castervilleans can hold a conversation in Alsatian. Thank you.
Thank you, Les.
I'm back. Thank you for hearing me twice in one meeting. So, Les is a part of a project that we kicked off about three weeks ago, to save the Alsatian language for future generations. The Alsatian dialect is one, as Les noted, that's spoken by less than twenty folks today, and there was a very real risk that we would lose it forever and have no record of it having been spoken here, other than in books and, and other such places, and, and no ability to learn it, from someone could watch people having a conversation like they did with their grandparents when they were kids. It's probably, you did with your, your grandparents, I would guess, no?
Yeah, a little.
Maybe a little, okay. So i- it's something that we, we're, we're in a race against time to capture those conversations and to capture those people. And so Les is a part of a project that we kicked off together with the Castro Colonies Heritage Association, the Medina County Historical Commission, and a, a number of, of, of private donors, to record folks speaking Alsatian in conversation, so not just a, a speech, or not just, but in real conversation, telling stories to each other, and some of the stories are, are quite humorous. We did the filming last week at the Beery House here at the, the Living History Museum. We captured around seven hours of conversation in Alsatian, from among those twenty speakers, of which, of which Les was one. And it's some incredible footage, we used incredible, the, the, the team that did it was two videographers, they came with incredible amounts of equipment, and it came out world-class, and it looks like a world-class filming when you see the results. So, we did that with private money. We did, and that, the, the total cost of the project is between ten and, ten and twelve thousand dollars. We did that videography because we were able to raise five thousand dollars from these private sources, from the Castro Colonies Heritage Association, from Medina County, et cetera, et cetera. And we need to raise the additional five thousand, seven thousand dollars, in order to do the editing and subtitling of those videos. So that's basically so that we can put English on the bottom, and you can watch these videos, and actually understand what is being said in, in them, and learn from that. So it'll be something that in twenty years, in thirty years, in a hundred years, is gonna be a priceless resource for our, our future kids and grandkids and all that good stuff. But even now, if someone wanted to take those videos and watch them, could learn a great deal of Alsatian. I, myself, don't speak Alsatian, but I can tell you, I picked up an incredible amount just watching those videos being filmed for seven hours. So, i- it's really neat. So I, I'm here to ask the council for, for, for five thousand dollars, basically, towards that editing and subtitling, in order to preserve the, the, the language. It's something that could potentially be put, I know a lot of folks who come to Casterville, they must ask themselves, what does Alsatian sound like? It could, it's a video that could be put, for example, on loop in the Steinbach House, that someone could turn on and listen to folks speaking Alsatian, hearing what it sounds like in, in, in real life, that type of thing, but also just generally, to raise the profile of Castroville as a city, in terms of this will be online and available. We've already gotten, by the way, an article in the Elsasser, which is the, the, the newspaper in Alsas about this project, so it's that type of thing, and also, of course, for the citizens in the future who wanna learn this. So, asking for five thousand dollars from the city to contribute to that project. The CCHA, the, the funds are being, are going through the CCHA in order to, to, to make this happen, and so, yeah, that's, that's our ask. Thanks for considering it.
And as a city, that we are considered the little Alsatists of Texas, I think that kind of at the core of it, the Alsatian language is pretty important.
Language is culture.
It is culture, right. And this is not to, this is not to demean anybody that speaks Spanish, or French, or Dutch, or German, those are all languages that were spoken when the first settlers came, but those languages are not dying. And Alsatian, who was telling me about this? It was either you, or it was Bradford. I, I, when the Alsatians would come here, they were, like, years ago, a few decades ago, they would come here and they would say, wow, that's a very unadulterated version of Alsatian, where theirs had continued to, to modify over the years.
Culturate, yeah.
This was still very much preserved, because it didn't have the outside influence of the other one. So, I just, I wanted to bring this, because I felt it was so important to, to preserve that, to support that as a city, so. Discussion.
Well, this is part of tourism and everything, so couldn't the hot funds be used for this?
That's what I was thinking. It's promotional.
I'll be honest, there's not a, there's not a need to go find the funds, y'all have, y'all have plenty of fund balance, it's just whether or not you wanna spend taxpayer dollars on this initiative. We can, you can't fund it. I don't know if hot funds can be used on or not, honestly, but we, if they can, and you wanna use them, that, we can, we can do that.
Yeah, because, I mean, with, I mean, the editing and everything, and like I said, it's already been in an article over in Elsace, and everything, the advertising is out there, and it's part of the history and everything, so I, and you mentioned five to seven thousand, I'd rather go on the high end, to make sure it's done well, and thoroughly, and well-preserved, so I, I'm all for the seven thousand dollar part of it. I'm, I'm German, my maiden name is Haas.
I was getting ready to dump this out in the past, I have.
So, yeah.
Hundred dollars per person, we get fifty people, that's, we got it.
But, that was my question, if hot funds could be used for this?
We'll, we'll have to verify that. I, I don't know if it can or can't. Obviously, hot funds can be used for marketing, could you loosely say this is marketing? I don't know, but we, we can look into that and get an answer for you. You know, the funding source really isn't an issue for the city.
But you also have a special, the council itself has a special fund.
That's true.
Yeah, they've spent a lot of that already.
Either one.
They've done a lot already?
They've already spent a lot of their special one, yes. The mayor's been busy.
Oh, what did we spend on?
The council's been busy. Councilman Carey.
I think it's a wonderful plan, I, I have no firsthand experience with it, but I, I've known a few Alsatian speakers who are no longer with us, and, and if, if there wasn't a downline there, it went with them. So, let's do it.
Councilman Carey.
I'm all for it, but we, have we actually spent council funds yet, the contingency funds for anything? I don't remember. I don't remember.
Well, I have a certain amount of authority to spend money.
Somebody dug you into it.
Yeah, we, we did spend. That's why, that's why I did that budget thing. I, I, I did do a little notification about budget spending and stuff. One of them was the Christmas, we spent about 10 grand with the chamber to improve our, our Christmas decorations on the bridge and elsewhere. So that, that was $10,000 that came out of that special fund. That's why I was telling Deborah. But again, you're not, the city's very, very strong financially. So it's just a matter of amending the budget, that this will not break us, nor will the other 10. We're okay. In fact, we'll probably, even at the end of the year, be able to add funds to the fund balance, even with these, these few expenses we discussed. It's just a matter of, is this the right thing to do?
I, I personally think it is the right thing to do. I mean, we are, there are a lot of German cities, there's other ethnic cities around. We, we're the only Alsace city in Texas, and one of the few in the country. I mean, and I, I may have mentioned this, Councilman, Casterville, the colonies, but more so Casterville and the other colonies, we're the only surviving French settlement in Texas. There was French colonies before and after Casterville, but we're the only surviving French colony. And that's Alsace. And so I, I think, I think this will be a big boost to help our marketing and our European visitors who come to Casterville and spend money here. And I think it's also part of our duty, just like it's our duty, the city's duty, to preserve these buildings that the city owns, this building here. I mean, I think it's also our duty to preserve the, the Alsace, the memory of the Alsace language. And so is this going to reinvigorate or are people going to learn it from these states? I don't think so, but I think a hundred years from now, people are going to say, oh, that's Alsace and that's what it sounded like. So, yeah, I'm, I'm for this project.
Councilman Chair.
Do we still, we still have folks from Alsace come over here and stay with us and us go to them like we used to in the past? That still happens?
Not during COVID.
Not during COVID, but yes.
COVID killed a lot of stuff.
Yep.
I could, I could support this 100%. I think it's great. I mean, to all the things that everybody added to it.
I support it. I'd make a motion if you want one.
I would.
We would need a motion to stand on.
I'll second it if you make it. I move that we approve an amount not to exceed $7,000 as a budget amendment to complete the project that we've started, that has been started by this group to preserve the Alsace language and culture.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
All right, you're going to be my money man. No, I'm not. I'm, I'm personally offended at how easy that was for you.
I'm spending it now, I'll make you some, just value it on a few years.
And Josh, what, what generation are you?
He wants to add some more zeros to that generation.
And what was the last generation that spoke Alsace?
Well, actually, my grandmother still speaks it and she's still living. So my grandmother is the last, though. She, she didn't teach it to her kids, so.
Justine Youngman used to be the Grand Marshal over in Alsace, I think, for how many years? Several, right? Does anybody go in our, in our behalf anymore since he's gone?
Well, they, they really haven't had it because of COVID.
COVID killed.
We have an item on the agenda, the mayor put on there that might.
His passing was actually one of the, like, wake-up calls for us.
By the way, the Alsace dancer has a ninth-generation Alsace dancer there, Josh, your son.
There you go.
So.
Very cool.
All right, great, thank you.
I mean, and this, I mean, I don't know, it's not the fact it's nine generations, it's nine generations living in this town. And, and you're not unique in that. There's a lot of families like that. I think that's neat.
As long as they don't intermarry, we're good.
Do what?
Nothing, nothing.
Oh, no, they aren't, they aren't.
There's some of that going on.
Why is that going on?
A lot of it going on back in the day.
That's why they've got the family tree prominent in high schools.
Notice how short some of them folks are. They've grown taller and taller.
So it just starts out with a handicap, doesn't it?
All right, I'm going to move one more item because it just seems very pertinent to this discussion. So item number 16, we're going to move that up. Angela, I apologize, but this just fits in really perfectly with this at, what time is it? 6:28. This item is discussion and appropriate action on appointing an official ambassador to Alsace to enhance communication and engagement with sister cities of Innsashine and Egishine. And the reason, the reason that this came up, so we've had communication from these cities, trying to communicate, wanting to know what's going on, and quite honestly, I've done a terrible job of doing that. I, I think it would be great to have somebody that could concentrate on that, that could actually, it's a point of honoring, these are our sister cities. We've done a lot in the past with these cities. There had, there's been a lot of communication, there's been a lot of camaraderie, there's been a lot of community there that I, I feel has just fallen to the wayside. And I think that it's important that we continue to do that, to continue that relationship. And so I, I feel that it would be very important to, to have somebody that could do that. I'd like to have it somebody quite official. My recommendation would be Councilman King. I think that he's not Alsacean, but his kids are.
Am I Alsacean? I was here, I was here from the 16th. I was here greeting the Alsacians that came to Casterville. But no, I'm not part of the Casterville.
Mayor, the city secretary was mentioning that there is someone with some designation by the city already. Who is that?
Well, Charlie Cease is the one when he goes over to his family.
Yes.
When they go over, he was always the one to bring or take the gifts and such.
And I spoke with Charlie first.
Okay, yeah. He's not been designated by the city in any capacity, okay?
No, he just, well, he just.
He was part of the twinning with, with Innsashine, and he's been very active in that. And I did check with him and, and he said that he probably wasn't the right choice. He's got other things to do in retirement, yes.
I, I do want to mention, Phil, David Kirkpatrick did send me an email, very well laid out. He, he's already speaks German, he's been over to Europe, he has a lot of familiarity over there, learns culture quickly. He was making a hard play at this. I said, there's no chance, sorry, buddy. I said, first off, you're not getting it above me. I mean, if there was the option, then, yeah, anyway.
And especially if this included free trips over there, but I don't think.
There could be as many self-funded free trips as you want, yes.
I did clarify, clarified with David as well, said they were not sending us over there, buddy, it's not happening.
And if anybody has, has ever experienced Phil's, just his character in dealing when the, when the French consulate came over, when the French ambassador came over, that was quite an honor. And just the way that he interacts with them and just quite, it's respectful, it's charming. I think that he would do the city a great honor in doing something like this. And I think that we can honor our sister cities by doing that.
Well, let's, let's be honest, meeting the king over the mayor is probably.
It's true.
By the way, king of Casterville. One, I, at a big party, I did have a, I was drinking beer with the mayor of Innsashine, and I had Bradford there to translate for us, so. So, but it was one of the dancers went over there three or four years ago. So, anyway.
Can I get a motion on this?
Sure, I will move that we elect Phil King as.
A point?
A point, either way. Phil King as Casterville's ambassador to Innsashine and Egishine.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congrats, Phil.
Congratulations, Phil.
You need to learn Alsace, though.
I think we'll work on that.
That's why they've got the videos, so you better start watching.
Seven hours of video.
The gates.
They're going to be on YouTube, right?
Watch this.
Congratulations, Phil.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for doing that. It's, the honor is.
Is my voluntary time, do I get paid twice as much now?
Twice, yeah.
Herb said it's just, it's just a position, it's.
Okay. He gets twice as much as he gets on his volunteer time, which is nothing.
There you go.
Yes. The same amount that he's getting for billing.
You get our respect and appreciation, yes.
All right, great.
Can I get a grant or something?
Sure. No, we'll get you a sash.
Oh, that's good.
I'll order it.
Okay. All right, thank you. So then, the next item, back to business, we got to get, I don't know, you're going to make seven, but the next item, we're going to, Deborah, I'm so sorry. Move to item number 10, which is, and I, I think that I saw our last one come in. Are we good? Okay? Presentation and discussion on the state of the library. And this is at 6:32.
It's up to you. If you've already got it up, then just use this.
Plug it in, punch the button.
Thank you.
Now, you've got everybody here from the library. I'm just curious, are you going to sing a dance?
Yes, we are.
It is.
And you are going to introduce your.
Yes. Because Jared asked a question and I won't. I want backing.
This is additional statistics that were not provided in the presentation.
Thank you.
They, they are or not?
They were not. This is an addition to.
Okay.
Because we like numbers.
So, and you know, I do have staff, I have a part-time with Kaden. He's been with us almost a year. Sarah Camacho has been with us since 2014. She's been at school, doing other stuff, but she always comes back to us. She's awesome. And our newest hire is Connor. She's a part-time. So I have one more that wasn't able to make it, but this is my staff, they wanted to hear it because I always say the library is great, but I wasn't going to say it too.
And I'm sorry, your name? I didn't.
Kaden. Uh, my name is Kaden.
Kaden.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
His claim to fame is he's Jonah's brother.
Will you please use the microphones? That would, that'll help too.
He's whose brother?
Jonas.
Jonas.
Oh.
Or Jonah's claim to fame is he's Kaden's brother.
I've known Kate for a while, he, he went to school with my son, so.
Yeah, so as Ms. Martinez said, I'm kind of a local here from Casterville. I was raised out by the lake and the library's been a big part of this community and a big part of my upbringing. So I wanted to represent the state of the library as of 2022. And our mission statement, oh, I guess it's just.
These are our outwardly topics. We're going to do mission statement, the library's stats, patron programs, patron services, the future of the library and the library, I didn't add the library's, sorry.
All right, so here's our mission statement. We take pride in our work here at the library. We get a lot of positive comments about our staff and the presentation of the library. And we'll move on to statistics of that for 2021.
So these are member classifications. As we know, N-City is free, which is just the local area. Then we have our service area, which includes the Medina Independent School District. We chose not to charge them. So if they're in this district, if they're one of the teachers, you get a paid card as well.
Medina Valley?
Medina Valley, that boundary. Paid members are Medina County, it's head household, which is $10 for the whole household. They can add additional cards for free. Also, paid members are Bear County, Adesosa, surrounding areas, those are $25 per library card. And these are our average number of card holders. As you can see, in 2016, we had, and this is the average, 2,000 per, per month. As it extended the decline when we closed in 2020. And then 2021, we, you see the difference. We did close for, as well, all libraries closed that margin until we reopened. We did do curbed site services, we tried, but as far as actually people coming in, we did our curbside services, we, we did try, but.
Yeah, so it kind of shows the same representation. Up until 2019, we were getting steady rises in library grants per year. And then we took a sharp decline in 2020 after the pandemic hit. And right now, we're kind of on this rise in 2021.
The, we did curbside, 628 people used curbside services, which means they did print and checkout books. So they were still utilizing our services. When we opened in May, that's when everybody started looking back to the library. We didn't do programs per se, we just tried to eliminate it to computer use, checkout. But I did want to go back to where I gave you the paperwork that I just gave you. As you can see, I went ahead and pulled the whole statistics, because that's a state draft, the cuts. So Casterville, Lido, Honda, Divine, Lake Hills, and San Antonio. You can tell in 2019, we were, and also the state average, how many people were using the, the library was 8%. That is higher than anybody else in the area.
Almost nine.
And then in 2020, you can see where we had to close, it went down, but we were still above everyone else. And this is through the Texas State Library, our commission. Everybody, we have, they were accredited libraries, we have to report our stats and statistics, so.
If I may, what I think is telling is to compare just these two, the top pages, side by side, 19 to 20, it tells you one thing, Casterville on a per capita basis outperforms all of the other libraries in our area. And number two, it shows that when there was a dip, Casterville still maintained that kind of outperformance. You, you look at the 19 numbers, you know, Honda was at like four and change per capita. We were at eight and change after, during the COVID, they dropped to four, or 2.75, and we were at four. So I think that's, that's, even though the numbers, the, the numbers, there was a pretty significant drop. When you look at it per capita basis, our library actually performed very, very well. And this, these are the metrics that the state light, so when we look for grants, those things, these came directly from the state's library statistical records.
Well, even with it being compared against San Antonio. And San Antonio combines all of their libraries.
Yes, all their branches in per, with city, and its program attendance, circulation, all the statistics are there. And you can see that we still are above and we try to go beyond, so. Yes.
So these are some of the resources that we provide for our patrons. We have the Lonsa Digital Library, which gives access to electronic resources like e-books and e-audiobooks. That's used through the LIDIA, which you can access on Apple and Google Play services. We have Mango, which is going to be helpful for Mr. Key, whenever he's trying to learn the Alsace, which is a free app.
There you go.
That, that we're trying to push a lot more just because.
Do they offer Alsace on Mango?
Not, I can't.
It's going to have a whole bunch of YouTube.
If not, here's another revenue source.
You guys can come into the library and teach courses in Alsace. So in the future, I do have a board member head of the library, and they're like, why didn't they ask us for help? We, we can actually get help in digital tires and teleprompters, so we have to talk to our students, sir. But Sarah, do you want to talk about someone's library? Because this is your key.
Um, yes, we, we have a texture based basis here to all the different libraries in Texas, like access to like consumer reports, legal forms, all of the things like that. And this is like the, the software, like, for people to go on, like, for the software and give you your skills.
Yeah, and just to touch on, you know, library loans, that's a system created for library systems throughout the country, where we can share materials, so stuff that we don't have, we can grab from a different library that may have and is willing to lend it to us, which we find is being utilized pretty often.
Can I ask a question really quickly? This is something I actually wasn't aware of. We had talked about it a while ago. The LinkedIn learning, you do have that available to patrons that come in?
Yes, we do. We do. We have to have a card, it is on our main site. We can't link you, but if they click and paste the link out, they can. My, my team has utilized it during our training.
So they don't have to be at the library to use it? That's pretty, that's, that's a lot, you know, that, there's, there's some real dollar value to that.
That's some real dollar value. And LinkedIn learning is, I've, I've been amazed at it because you can learn all kinds of skills and it gets in depth.
Yeah.
It's not just software skills.
Yeah, I didn't know that was available until the.
Project management.
Yes.
Great resource for city staff who can get their library cards.
During our inventory, we took a couple of courses and we did get a certificate F and M. So it's utilizing our core continuing education for the state of the board.
That's awesome, thank you.
Yeah, so here's a look at our programs, what we've done through, these are the staff What we've done through 2011, these are the staff's programs and the other ones. So this is a combination of children's and adult programs, like Teacher Book Drive that we just had in 2021. And book clubs is comprised mostly of adults. We don't have very many children's book clubs just because of lack of space and lack of availability in terms of like time availability. And then summer camps is a big one this last year. We revamped that after the pandemic. So it's showing 90% of the total program, which is, I think is a pretty big part just because a lot of the times kids over the summer are looking for something to do. And a library is like a great place to bring children. Even though a lot of people see it as part-time daycare, they're still learning stuff in terms of literature, in terms of like how to be more sociable with other people, so.
We've lost that skill.
Me?
We've, no, we as a, we as a, we as a community or our country has lost social skills.
Yeah, especially with this pandemic, it's been a huge hit on developing social skills for young children, so.
And I'd like to say that Ritz-Christians is not being held at the library anymore due to space combinations. What is the church that the Discover Church has hosted us? Because we have so many people participating, which is not really for the benefit of the library itself.
Wow.
How big are the classes, 25?
I'm going to say probably nine months. Yeah, how many ones do you remember? Twenty, twenty-five. And I'd like to point out that D-W, the classes, the D-W-T soft classes, Kaden and I did a micromade class with the patrons. And that was fun with other patrons.
Yeah, we did a holiday one with Mickey Reese. Yeah, Mickey Reese, that had a decent turnout. We also had, what did you have, Tina Park class? We did a format with me.
So. So you may notice that we used to have chess club, we had Lego club, we had weekly. So now what we're doing is just emphasizing on a big, big object to do and bringing it up to the kids because, or the older adults, because to be safe. Because our meeting space that we have right now and the amount of kids that would participate in the program, it's just not feasible.
We had the pumpkin meeting in October and the pastures.
And those were taking go, we didn't take them go class if they weren't comfortable and staying in the project.
And the cooking courses were really good too. Thank you for that, yeah.
We do do a Facebook, let's cook with us. Sarah?
Yeah, so we're trying to do it every week and it always happens every week, but there's cake, a cookbook on our shelf. If you find your recipe from it, the friends in the library are helping us fund this. But we, you know, we make the meal there in the library. We have lots of company coming. We film everything, we make videos, we do stuff, we post it. And that way the people should know like what kind of books we have on our shelves as far as cooking. And if you want to see videos, we film that.
That's really cool.
It tastes better locally than on Facebook.
He's part taken in our. Yeah.
So.
The future of our library.
Yes. Right, so this is a little synopsis of kind of what the library holds in terms of value as well as what it needs to hold for the future of our expanding community. We have a very wide demographic, as y'all know. We have elementary schools, high schools, middle schools. We have a college, junior college. So we also have a lot of elders here that use our library. So the library needs to be a wide variety of miniature needs, which it does for now. But as the SA effect grabs hold of our small town, we need to be able to combat that with grabbing. I mean, it's, it's a pretty prominent thing. People are moving out here and we need to be able to meet the needs of these people that are moving out here because if not, they're going to be left behind. So I think that, what, there's a next one? Sure. The needs of our expanding community would be getting a training lab or a computer lab dedicated for agents to use as well as room for our local history to keep the Altation culture rich and prominent in this town, which we're very proud of. And a lot of people do come in to use our Texas history section. They look up their history as well as genealogy and stuff like that. And in regards to the young, the young citizens of our city, we need a larger children's space as well as meeting rooms, which are frequently asked about. People come in asking for a private room to study, whether that's for their, you know, their college obligations, work obligations, et cetera.
So currently, you can see at the top corner, that is the junior fiction section. On the bottom is I guess seating area for the patrons. And we have our adult, you know, that is the Y-A area. That corner is the children's room. So it has been hard to actually do storytime. We haven't been able to bring it back because so many kids are cramped in that space. And then on the bottom, that is our kitchenette. My staff does not have a break room. We basically have to eat or we work. Or if there's a program going on, they have to eat outside or they cannot eat at the lecture at this point. And then on the bottom, that is where we have our, our circulations, our quarantine books that come in. We check into the books. So as you can see, that is part of the kids' room. The kitchenette is in the children's room. And then we do have our pumpkin meeting, our other programs. This is the space that we have to use. So right now, I understand it's a pandemic, but we would like to give more programming. And I'm not saying it's going to happen one year, two year, but down the line, we're going to have to think about building another, building an added space. Because as you can see, in the previous years, we were just growing and growing in how many people were coming in and all the programs we were offering. Hopefully, when the pandemic starts to expire, we expect that to happen again.
Thank you.
And.
Yeah, this is a concept design for the new building. It was done in 2011, so some of these might need to be made. But here you can see on the top right, it shows expanded parking. Because right now, you have like 10 spaces maybe, you know, no more than 20 spaces that you like park on the curb as well. So you have that there. The bottom part is the layout of the library. We have that little garden section and then also square footage to expand the children's area as well as provide a private study space.
Can you tell us what the square footage of the proposed building is total?
Well, and let's be clear on this, and I, I don't mean to cut you off, but I want to be very, very clear. This is not planning documentation. This is theoretical documentation. And I think that before we start getting into too much detail, we need to make sure that we're.
I see the number at the bottom, but I can't read it.
Can't read it. Thirteen thousand four hundred.
Thank you.
What are y'all in right now?
I just can't see it close.
No.
I can see over there.
I can too. I got the same problem.
Thirteen thousand. Thirteen thousand is what that proposal shows.
And this is, this is just, this is what we're going to need in the future, in the town. I don't expect this to happen in the next year or two. But this was 2011 that it's been nesting in.
In the planning. Somebody had a vision.
He and the policeman have, he passed away a couple of years ago, but he drafted this for the first of the library.
And I think that the key takeaways here are, you know, I've heard in past years, people really talking down the investment that we're making in the library. And to me, it is, this is an investment in our future. It is to maintain that kind of education level. One of the things that, one of the, the resources that not everybody is aware of, I, I think that people that have been here for a while know about this, but some of the new folks that are coming in and coming through don't know about the rich family histories that we have there. It's not, they're not published. They're, they're written by the families and maintained there. I've been talking to Scott about how we need to protect that a little bit better. We've had some opportunities for improvement, some, some things that we need to make sure that we maintain better control over. But we have this area that is so very crucial to, to our culture, to our heritage.
Yeah, and as far as right now, our local history and our findings and everything, it's a small little shell, two shells. How much, right, how much, two shells. And it's out in the open, so we cannot monitor it currently. So if somebody takes an item and steals it, we cannot, we're not able to be there and.
Have we finished digitizing those?
Um, we haven't yet.
Okay.
He is working on that.
All right.
We're trying to get Miss Cocker to give some grants for that.
And you can talk to David over the Landmark Inn as well. He's offered to help with some of that digitization with his staff, so.
We, we do have our own scanner and stuff that we can do it. And we have scanned for state patrons that are out of state that can't get to the library and they want to see this local history going. And we have done that, sent a mepidia. But as far as, it's a separate hardware, it's a portal to Texas history. So it's through U and T. They have to know that we can't just scan it and say, okay, this is what we want on the site. So they have to do it if it's going to be official. A lot of stuff.
But every time you scan something and send it somewhere, you save those files.
Yes.
And, but just because of your concern that someone might take one of them, it would be a good reason to digitize them. And if you all don't have it, you can do it yourself, and that would be something that worked with David and could let him work.
And they have not just scanning equipment, but people that can help out with that. It'll just, to me, it's the, the worst travesty that we could have there is we lose that for some accidental.
There are so many differences that have happened. And it's just because we don't have the space. I had, I guess, the Medina County local mystery, the big black books, volume one is still on. So I mean, it's hard. It's hard when we're.
So you don't have volume one?
We have a backup volume one.
Okay.
So I, I like to keep the extras in case we.
I was going to give you another volume.
Well, she needs a backup now.
Sheena, you have six minutes.
There you go.
No, I mean, we will, the CCHA will give you another volume.
Sheena has six, you have like six minutes before.
We're not going to make it.
I know.
We can, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or concerns or?
If you are giving away any Altation books or selling them out there on the street, give us a call. We will, the CCHA.
Well, I heard that we had needed some books, but I have documentation that we never needed anything.
Yeah, so I did follow up on that. We don't know who bought, what was sold or who bought it. So I would, if you have that information, what was, because I don't think it was intentional on the library's part. I think someone put it in the wrong spot and ended up getting sold. So we would like to know what got sold. If you know, if anybody has more information on what books were purchased, I would like that information.
I even did a weed report to make sure none of the staff did local history or anything. And I can give you.
We just need, it's not something that you need to defend. It's something that, cool. All right, thank you.
Well, I.
Really quickly, I just need a document that Councilwoman Martinez had to leave at 6:56.
No, we were concerned as well. By one spot, that was my attention. I was concerned because this is a local history, we can't write from what we deal with. We have in the library. We do read out books, but we never read out local history or Altation stuff. I do have boxes in my IT room where we have this stored because we don't have space for them anywhere else. But like I said, it was not needed by my staff. I have documentation here. And it wasn't depending, it was like, okay, what happened?
Yeah, I'd like to know how, how that happened so we can present that.
We just need to put some controls over to make sure that it doesn't happen again.
Scott, could we, could we do a local outreach and ask if anybody purchased that, if they would consider returning it? Because it is irreplaceable.
So as long as we have the procedures in place to make sure that it doesn't happen again. I think that first, we need to work on getting those procedures in place. I don't want to beat a dead horse.
That's why I did it, well, I had Connor. If you want to talk about.
No, we're good.
No, that doesn't.
We're good.
That's okay.
Thank you. We'll get more information. Thank you.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, this was a great presentation. Thank you for taking time out of your night to come by here and share that.
Came all the way from UTSA.
Man, that's a long time.
Good job. Thank y'all.
Had to throw that in. It is. Thank you.
All right.
All right, next item. I'm going to go ahead and get us, let's see, is there anything?
You skipped eight.
I skipped a bunch.
You keeping track of where you're at?
Yeah, I did. Okay, we're going to go back on track. Number eight, discussion and appropriate action on authorizing the task order number five with K-Freeze for engineering services for WWTP dam and pond improvements in an amount not to exceed $252,425. This item starts at 6:58.
Mayor and council, if I may, first off, I have to admit a mea culpa on this. The, and some of you may, this is an item that was budgeted in last year's budget. You may or may not recall, it's, but it's been black and white in the budget. I think I put it in front of you, mayor, for you to have this evening. But it was $200,000 that we'd originally budgeted for this. And there was a miscommunication between me and John in September of last year. September 22nd, to be exact. He asked me to sign a task order for K-Freeze. It was for the amount of 252,000, which is the one that you have in front of you. I asked him, is this, has this gone to council for their approval? He said, yes. We remember this conversation differently, by the way. And I said, okay, and so I signed it.
He's just lucky that he's got the microphone, dude.
Yeah, no, well, but I will represent both sides as best I can. But anyway, then Deborah got to look at it and thinks, no, I don't think this ever did go to council. And I, I think the confusion was it was in the budget. And so from John's perspective, it went to council, you approved it in the budget. But what I was thinking and failed to communicate clearly to John was these items, even when they're budgeted, whether it's vehicles or equipment, any capital related item, it may be budgeted, but it has to come back to council. Like if you say, you approved $66,000 for vehicles, we're still going to come back to you and say, okay, you approved 66,000, here are the actual vehicles we plan on buying, here's the actual amount we plan on spending, and we want you to approve this particular purchase in accordance with the budget. And that did not happen, and that is what's happening tonight. The reason I'm mentioning this is because K-Freeze already started. I signed, I, I, your city administrator, signed and authorized them on September the 23rd. And so they've been doing engineering since then. This is in the CIP, it is provided for there. They have not, we are going to get, they're going to bring back a, a report in March, more than like the second meeting in March. Will they inform us and talk to us about what their work has uncovered, if you will? Because originally, as most of you know, I know Herb and the mayor didn't see the report in 2020, but apparently in October 2020, there was a subcontractor that K-Freeze brought in, and that's mentioned in the reports that is in your packet.
Actually, I saw.
They did an initial, okay, they did an initial study and came up with three options. And what it is looking like as a result of some of the geotechnical reports that have been done, et cetera, or studies that have been done since then, that we aren't actually doing any of those options. We'll do a hybrid, more than likely, of option two. Option two was, was an option where we get rid of one of the ponds and shrink the size of the other pond. And so this would be some hybrid of that in part because of, again, some of the geotech that they got back. I can't elaborate more than what I just said. That's as much as I know, but in March, we'll get further information. So again, I apologize. This is something that normally I would have brought to you in September, back in September before signing it. I just thought it had already been before you and you'd already approved it.
Question?
Please.
Since, since we didn't authorize it, you signed it, does it come out of your pocket?
There is an emissions clause, but no.
I'm going to, I'm going to argue that's in the budget and that's an ordinance.
That comes out of your raise.
No.
Out of your travel budget?
It was, 200,000 was.
Last year's budget.
Yeah, last year's budget.
Did it get carried forward?
And last year, we did, it was, it was still, September 23rd was last year, in last year's budget.
Executed last year.
But it was, it, yeah, it didn't get utilized and.
So you have to pull it into fund balance?
Yeah, so that money rolled into fund balance and it'll come back out of fund balance. Now, there is just like, you know, what you approved was 200,000 and what they came back with was 252. So there is a difference. You know, I don't know that was, anyway.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to the council approve task order number five, K-Freeze for engineering services for ways for a bigger plant pond and dam improvements in an amount not to exceed $252,425.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
That's important work. We need to do it.
Well, as I said, it's been ongoing. You're going to get a report in March, and I, and I don't think it's going to be a, here's the plan. It's going to be a, here's what we think the plan should be. So they aren't going to bring us a, a set, this is what we're doing. We're going to have some opportunity to, to talk about what their findings were and what they're recommending, and then explore whether that's the best approach or whether there's other approaches out there.
I've walked into some of those rails on that, on that embankment and, and it's scary. That could, we don't want to see that go.
Right.
I had two points. The first is I'm concerned about the Bed and Banks permit that we've been not moving very fast on for the last couple of years. But we've started moving and we are, we are moving on it. And Scott assures me that we're not jeopardizing our ability to get the Bed and Banks permit by doing this. But in fact, we're probably enhancing it because it shows that we're reacting to the bad inspection that we got several years ago. So I'm, I'm happy with that. But I just would like to ask the question, are we buying a Cadillac when a Chevrolet would be enough for this work order? Is this work order, the way it is structured? Is this work order, the way it is structured, is, is everything in it absolutely needed at this time, or are we, or we just think it is?
Well, so this, so first off, you know, the fee, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, two, uh, two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar fee is, uh, based on the scope, and the scope is defined in what you have before you, and I think the scope of the product's appropriate. You can, you know, you can, you can bait whether two hundred and fifty-two thousand is, is a good deal or not, but, I mean, yeah, I've talked to other, I think we'd be paying if the same amount if we were dealing with KSA or Respec or any, you know, pull out your Rolodex and, and pick a name from the folks that we've dealt with in the past, it's going to be about that amount. Now, the question is going to come down to what is the solution, so this is just the engineering that's going into identifying a solution, and whether or not that solution is the Cadillac solution, and I, I have had a lot of discussion, Herb, about this with, with some of, some other engineering partners, to, to better understand, is the advice we're getting appropriate, is it, is it good advice, more or less, from K-Freeze? And, um, that, that was, if, you just, you know, trust but verify is, I think, was it Reagan that used to say that?
Yeah.
It's kind of one of those things, um, and I got basically the feedback that, that what they're looking at is appropriate, the scope is appropriate, the, the types of solutions they come up with are appropriate and in line with what we might expect from some other engineering group, without naming names, so, uh, that's good. We will see in March what they've actually come, come up with, and I don't know what that is, uh, I'll probably find out a few days before you will, um, what that'll look like, but that's when I think really we can kind of determine as a council, is this the Cadillac or the Chevrolet version? And I know what our desire is, and my desire certainly, for a plant that I think, think is ill-located, undersized, um, yeah, I, I want to see the, the Pinto cost, because I don't want to spend any more money than we actually have to on that plant that already cost the city fourteen million? Nine million? So it's, it's, you know, we, we want to minimize our damage there, and, and I, I think that's painfully, I think the staff is painfully, painfully aware of that, uh, but we, at the same time, we have to do what we have to do to, to meet TCQ's requirements.
Important thing that I wanted to say was that this is just the beginning, I mean, we're not, this is not like, this is going to solve the problem. We got four more years of work to do, up to four more years of work to fix this stuff, so this is just the beginning, and, uh, we're going to see it again soon when they finish, and, uh, I hope we see it in the February twenty-second CIP meeting, and I'm hoping that we have it broken out in reasonable phases, because we're going to have to explain to the taxpayers why we want to spend millions more.
Yes, I know.
To fix the plant that we just spent millions to build.
We don't want to spend millions more, but it's just like your foundation goes bad, you have to get it re-engineered and leveled and fixed, and the fact is that this is something legacy that we have to deal with, it's not something that we caused, it's not something that.
Well, trees should have never been allowed to be on where they are, that's the bottom line, the city was neglectful, and I don't know who you want to blame or whose feet you want to lay that at, but twenty, thirty years ago, when trees began to grow up on there, they should have been dealt with immediately, and they weren't, and now the city, council is having to deal with repercussions, and unfortunately, a few trees that probably were volunteers, no one planted, are costing, going to cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars and potentially more than that, right? You're shaking your, agree or don't agree?
Don't really plant those trees.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I, I think they were all volunteers, so.
They just weren't cut down.
But they weren't, it wasn't maintained the way it should have been, and again, it is what it is, but, um, so in answer to Herb's question, I know that, um, or his concern, I know that John has been working diligently with, uh, with our public works director, John Gomez, has been working diligently with, uh, K-Freeze to make sure that the CIP, what was going to be brought together on the twenty-second, that those numbers are reflective of a multi-year, multi-phased approach, not just for this project, but for all the projects that the city's contemplating and bringing forward for your adoption, so that'll be in there, the numbers, again, will be our best estimate and best guess, and I am going to, uh, based on our last council meeting, we will be probably increasing those and creating a contingency for those, uh, various projects, and, which again, will have an impact on the overall, but we're going to have to do a little bit less than what we had hoped to do, just because we don't want to get in a, in a situation where we're short.
Okay, all right, so I've got a motion and a second. More discussion, sorry?
Yeah, as, as the mayor said, this is a legacy that goes back thirty years, you don't allow trees to grow on dams, because when the tree dies, the roots deteriorate and it allows a piping situation and a failure, and so the TCQ is correct, and we have an enforcement action against the city because of this, and it needs to be corrected, has nothing to do with any of us sitting in this room, it just, the people back then didn't know that you don't let mesquite trees and trees grow, and you should be out there mowing them down and things like that.
If it makes you feel any better, a much, much larger city that I was associated with in the past had the exact same problem.
Willow trees like water.
When I got there, their dam was full of trees and, um, it, we had to do something similar.
Actually, it needs to be corrected.
Source of water.
Yeah, it needs to be corrected, and, uh, and it has nothing to do with the water treatment plant, these predated the water treatment plant, and everybody knew it was going to be a problem, um, and I've looked at their fees and their scope of work, and I, and I think they're, what they're doing for is, I think, it's, it's a therapy, so, and I am looking forward to seeing what they, because they, they presented this to us a couple of years ago, and, so we knew it was coming back.
We talked about the options, the different options over here.
Right. And I, I agree with the, the approach of bringing it back, looking at different options, making sure that it aligns with the, uh, parks and, uh, the, the Parks Board and the Parks Plan, and, in other words.
I just know what the Parks Board would be the, the tail that wags the dog on a multimillion dollar project.
Absolutely.
We're, we're going to, if we're, especially if we're looking to do a Chevrolet version, we're going to have to be very careful about, and, and be very honest with ourselves and everybody else about what our options are and what the, you know, what our decisions will be based on, and I think it should be primary, and personally, I think it's.